Open the meeting to the public? Anybody wishing to address the board may do so at this time? Yes, Paul.
Yes, Paul Muppets. I was here a couple of weeks ago with a couple meetings back. I guess I brought up the issue of the parking, the winter parking ban in the village. I just came to kind of follow up on it a little bit and to, uh, I won't be as long as the last time. Just to ask if you've been looked into or discussed, just to remind you of the problem. Some properties in the village have absolutely no way to park on their own property because of the ban, it devalues the property. Parking on other people, I talked to a few of you since then, and I'm sure everybody's trying to help out, but parking on other people's property is not a good solution. If it were, I would ask which of you will volunteer your property for all the people to park on? I wouldn't suggest that the light system is too expensive until we know what it would cost. I prefer that, you know, well, it's expensive. Well, unless somebody actually has a cost of that, that's not really, uh, to say it's too expensive, it's kind of meaningless. I might suggest, other than the lights, the, uh, another solution, I don't know, might be, uh, parking permits for those residents affected into the village parking lots, uh, possibly. Total ban for the four months, every night, seems excessive to me and kind of punitive to the small number of village residents and homeowners and property owners that are affected. I don't believe there are that many people that are affected by it, but it certainly devalues their properties, uh, I would say. And so I'd just like to remind you to help find a solution, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. We are looking into it, and we've had several discussions, back and forth and back and forth, but that's not as far as we've gotten.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else wish to address the board and may do so at this time? If not, you get a chance at the end of the meeting. Yes, sir?
I'm Matt Fober. I'm with the Boy Scouts of America, and I'm working on my Eagle Scout project, and I'm looking for the board's approval to build a set of dugouts at the rec center. And I've already got the okay from Michael Bryan. He said I just have to get the approval from you guys now.
The only thing I think the board will request is to see a set of plans of some type.
I've got the mentions and I've got pictures of what I would like to build, if you'd like to see them.
On a case?
Can you bring them up?
Yeah, I can bring them up.
How much it could cost? Not hard?
No. I will have everything, I will have the labor to build it, and hopefully it won't take any upkeep in, like the other set dice. So I want to put a tin roof on it instead of fiberglass in the other one, and it's all going to be painted, so no, nothing will have to be replaced.
Great idea.
Talking about replacing the ones that we're building?
Replacing the ones out there or building new ones?
I'm building new ones for the baseball field.
I would suggest that, you know, you give us some sort of sketch or plans along with the pictures, and then we can go forward from there. I don't see much of a problem. You know, if you're going to be doing labor down there, uh, we will probably need, uh, a certificate of insurance that you, you know, that you're covered.
Cover them there, sure?
I don't know, but the inclusion of the requirement, Carol will check tomorrow.
We can check with the Boy Scout office as well.
You probably haven't, and I know that, I think so.
There is an insurance that we have to pay for, I believe.
It's just to protect everybody, you, me, and everybody else.
It's great.
All right. I thank you very much. I certainly appreciate it, and I'm sure the board does. Young people that are playing out there probably will appreciate it. Is there anybody else at this time? If not, uh, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting, a regular meeting of December fifteenth. You all have copies of the minutes or numbers, is there any addition or deletions? If not, I'll entertain a motion that the bills be paid. Minutes. Sorry, minutes. All right, have a good night, continuing with debate. Sorry about that. Minutes. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting of, I got November seventeenth here, but that's not.
December fifteenth.
Yeah, December fifteenth. I'll put that form of motion. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried, bills. You all have copies of the bills, is there any addition or deletions?
No, there's not.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills tonight. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, correspondents?
Uh, the only item I have tonight is a letter, um, on behalf of North Lamar and the Rosas Point Champagne Historical Society, I would like to submit a request to reserve the civic center from July sixth to July twenty-fifth, two thousand nine. During this time, the civic center will be used as a venue for the sixth annual Fete de Donz. Two thousand nine will feature the quadricentennial celebratory production of Voyage de Donz, the Samuel D. Champagne Ballet, which will feature the Gleich Dance Contemporary Ballet, the New York Baroque Dance Company, Wendy's Women of the Drums, and the Annoir, I have no idea how to pronounce it, among other special guests. And the performance will take place over the course of three evenings, Thursday through Saturday, July twenty-third through twenty-fifth, with a special children's matinee performance on Saturday, July twenty-fifth. The entire production will continue to function as a benefit event for the Rosas Point Historical Society, and that's from Jason Andrew.
I would guess we probably want to make sure that we go through this with the, with the rec center. I'd be interested to know if the performance is over the course of three evenings, how exactly that's going to run, whether we staff the rec center during that time, just to talk a little bit, maybe even to contact Jason to talk a little bit about the changes from past years.
Yeah, I think this has all got to do with Kelly, or trustee Penfield, with, uh, the, uh, moncentennial, you know, thing, and I think you've got a grant to put this on.
Well, it's fine, I just think in terms of the logistics, though, it might be good for us to make contact, I don't have a problem with them using the rec center, but just to make contact with them to discuss, um, just what, what the expectation is, I guess, of our facility during this time, because it is different from past years, that's it.
So you want to just hold that for now? Hold that for next meeting? That I've done, we'll have a chance to talk with.
I, I would say, I mean, I'm certain, like I said, I don't have any objection to them using, I just wondered if anyone else was thinking along the same lines.
I think we should check with Mike to see what's, just in case, as we, we are looking at some construction this year, so in these days we'll have to be working into that.
Yeah.
Just to be sure we know, like I said, the expectation of the village in granting their requests, that's all.
Yeah, we might be right in the middle of it, how things work out, right? I hope not. We'll do like we did with, uh, with the park down there. We told the architect already that he has to hold off until after, after the canoe trip. Canoe trips will start on the twenty-second of June from here to New York City. About seventy, they said about between seventy, seventy-five people will be there. Yeah. I'm going to paddle all the way to New York. I think it's the fourteenth of July, they're like, to New York City.
They have more in Michigan than I do.
Uh, we'll just hold off until next.
I, I, you know, I know what anyone else's feeling is, that's all.
I think it's a good idea, we'll check with Mike and make sure that.
Make sure, especially with this, a three-day battle, we want to make sure, uh, something else, especially with President Obama.
There is a lot going on right here. Okay. Okay, any other correspondence?
That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. I reported a mayor and a trustees, and the only thing on my agenda tonight is, uh, copy, uh, I have a resolution, uh, for the general election, and it says, notice is hereby given as the board of trustees, the votes are off the point. Flint County, New York, on the fifth day of January two thousand nine, passed a resolution set forth the voter registration day for two thousand nine village election. A copy of the complete resolution is followed. And I go through the whole thing, but just, just, because it's a whereas and what for, and I don't think anybody needs to hear that, but it'll be held on the eighteenth day of March will be registration day.
No, that's a much.
Oh, I'm sorry, general election, yes, yes. Will be held on the tenth day of February.
The inspectors will be meeting upstairs to start to put the books together.
From eight AM to four PM.
But that's not registration, that's the.
Registration? Jumping, right, who's this?
The seventh day of March is registration day. You want me to, would you like me to read it?
I'll read it, I'll read it.
Okay, thank you. But whereas the next village election for officers will be held on the eighteenth of March two thousand nine, and whereas no person shall be entitled to vote at any village election whose name does not appear in the register of the election district in which he or she claims to be entitled to vote, and whereas it is the duty of the inspectors of election to prepare such register of qualified voters for the district for which they are appointed, and whereas the village officials have chosen to hold a registration day for the general village election. Now therefore be resolved that the inspectors of election shall meet upstairs at the village complex at one thirty-nine Lake Street on the tenth day of February two thousand nine, beginning at eight thirty AM and ending at four o'clock PM, to commence the preparation of the register for the forthcoming village election. Registration for the village shall be held on Saturday, the seventh of March two thousand nine. Such registration shall be held at the village office at one thirty-nine Lake Street, Rosas Point, New York, from twelve o'clock noon until five o'clock PM. Voting for the forthcoming village election shall be conducted at Halston Hall, Rosas Point Civic Center, thirty-nine Lake Street, Rosas Point, New York. The polls will be opened within the hours of twelve o'clock noon until nine o'clock PM. And this, at least ten days prior to the registration set in this resolution, a copy of such resolution shall be published in the official newspaper, and a copy will be posted at one inspector's public place in each election district. And this resolution shall take effect immediately. Question of the foreground, do we put the roll call vote?
Put that form of motion, second. Moved by myself, seconded by trustee Jefferson, roll call vote. Trustee Jefferson. Aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Burts.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Now, that's a Wednesday, right? Because we voted a previous meeting?
Yes.
The election will be on a Wednesday?
Yes.
So then we probably also want to announce that our schedule of meetings needs to be changed as well?
Yes, I will, I will.
Okay. That would have to be done Thursday? Because it's right now the eighteen.
Yeah. We're just thinking, yeah, that, don't come due till April one, the new schedule.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, next thing on my agenda, which was not on the agenda, or it might be on the supplement, yeah, authorization to go to the Conference of Mayor's Winter Legislative Meeting in February. Is there anybody on the board interested in going besides me?
Anyone be interested, right?
You will? Well, you need to make reservations tomorrow. The reason why is that they fill up pretty fast, and it's twenty, Sunday, the twenty-second of February through Tuesday, the twenty-fourth. I'll put that in motion, allow Mayor Rivers and trustee Burts to attend the Nikon Winter Legislative Meeting on February twenty-second through the twenty-fourth of this year. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Is there any discussion?
That'd be pretty interesting this year.
Oh, it'd want to be some hot topics. First of all, the only repeat would be shoulder to shoulder.
True.
Uh, no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carried. Just a couple other things, uh, next Tuesday and Wednesday, I'll be in Syracuse for the New York Municipal Electric Meeting, uh, having a luncheon that day, and I think it's still, I haven't even approved it or not, the thing, for Bob Mullane, who is retiring, or has retired as of December thirty-first, as general manager of the New York Municipal Power Agency. And I think one of the things that's been done, at least I hope so, because I made a motion, that on, in the new building, the new conference will be the Bob Mullane Conference. So I shall be back on the fourteenth late, and on the fourteenth, the new ambulance will be delivered here late at night, I'd say late at night, they're leaving New Jersey on the fourteenth morning. That's for the Jefferson permission. And that's it for me, trustee Jefferson.
Thank you, Mayor Rivers. A couple items on my agenda tonight, the first item is, uh, make a motion to request an executive session to discuss an electrical customer.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Okay, roll call vote, trustee Jefferson. Aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Burts.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Aye.
Okay. The second item on my agenda is, I'll put this in form of a motion, I'll request an executive session to discuss electrical personnel.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burts. Again, roll call vote, trustee Jefferson. Aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Burts.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
And the mayor will say aye.
Okay, uh, the last item I have on my agenda is, I just want to mention the, uh, my brother was sick over the holidays, and the rescue squad took him to the hospital, and I just want to acknowledge the kind care that the rescue squad does in the village, and, uh, very well thought of by the village board and by the, uh, people in the village, and I want to thank them for keeping up the good work and, uh, looking forward to the new ambulance coming online next week. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson, trustee Penfield.
I too need to request an executive session, uh, to discuss the CFA contract negotiations.
Second. Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Roll call vote, trustee Jefferson. Aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Excuse me, trustee Burts.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
And the mayor will say aye.
That's all I have for tonight?
Oh, thank you, trustee Penfield. Trustee Burts.
Um, I'd like to start out by, Mr. Duffy is pretty concerned about the parking on Lake Street, makes, I want to make sure, reaffirm to Mr. Duffy and the village residents that we are going to sit down and try to, uh, find out how many people are really going to be disrupted, I might say, the people that don't have any access whatsoever to their building off Lake Street, I think that's the biggest issue. I don't think there are that many, uh, as you pointed out, it might be just a few residents that are north of Montgomery, which would include Mr. Duffy and Mr. Diario and, uh, and maybe, uh, Ann O'Connor's residence. I think most of the rest of the village probably has enough parking behind or establishments that are parked on it. I know around the east side doesn't seem to be a problem, so definitely look into that and try to get some resolved for those people, especially you and, uh, your neighbors. If we can't resolve this before winter's over, no, so maybe the next week, maybe a special parking permit or something, that would be. Just to, just to mention that, we didn't mention that before. No guarantees, but we certainly will try. And then I would like to request an executive session to discuss personnel issues.
Second. Moved by trustee Burts, seconded by trustee Jefferson, roll call vote, trustee Jefferson. Aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Burts.
Aye.
Trustee Baker. Aye. And the mayor will say aye.
And the other two items that I have should all sort of under the same executive request for, because it all has to do with village personnel. One of it is leave carry over, and the other was the pine card issue, which, um, it's kind of a particular personnel.
That's it? Thank you, trustee Burts. Trustee Baker.
The only thing I have is, hopefully next week, we meet with, uh, street holders engineer, I think it'll be those places here. And that's the only thing I have. Just maybe we get some results.
How's the roof been? I mean, I haven't.
Well, he's, he's had some stuff come down again this way. This weekend he did a nine-nothing, you know?
No, but I wondered about the leaks, so.
Yeah, I guess the leaks are pretty well sealed up.
And it's just the insulation is because when we washed the roof and leaked through it, that way to the downstairs.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you, trustee Baker, Carol. Or Sen.
One thing I have is just a reminder to have everybody get their budget sheets in to their chairpersons. A happy new year to everyone.
Thank you, thank you. You were so cheerful about the project. Didn't have any sheets yet, huh? Why that?
I want to sell that some today.
I haven't seen any.
I haven't seen them.
Yeah, well, just wait your turn.
Okay.
Okay. Brian?
Uh, just an update on the transformer for the substation. Uh, it was on its way in Illinois, they hit an overpass, so they had to bring it back to South Dakota to have it tested, and, uh, they're trying to fix it and turn it around as soon as they can, so we should have it in our yard, hopefully next week.
Hit it overpass?
They had a planned loop with permits because it's over height, overweight, and over width, and they can only travel during the day, and a state trooper made them take an alternate path, and the state of Illinois is paying for the damage.
Well, them troopers are bad, aren't they?
Was there much damage, or does it even pay to ask that question?
No, there wasn't much damage. What happened, apparently I talked to, uh, Dean Larson, he was, uh, he's one of the head ones at TNR Electric, that rebuilt the transformer, the state trooper made him stop underneath an overpass, and it cleared the first two bushings, and if you wanted to stop, it would have cleared, it's when he stopped, the trailer came up. When it did, that's what the third bushing hit the overpass.
Well, blame can't be a hundred percent on the trooper.
John, they pretty much, they called us, and I told them that we didn't want that transformer like that, unless it was a hundred percent guaranteed. Between Dean Larson and myself and Kurt, we decided to turn it around and send it back to make sure it's a hundred percent.
But is it? It's going to go back?
Yes.
All right, is that it?
No?
Oh!
I met with Scott from Atlanta Detroit tonight to do the final wiring and the switch in the water plant, and it works A-OK. We worked the switch, very happy with it. So now we're back on, if we lose power in the water plant, they can run. Yeah. So that's a good job done. Got to go electric, we've been having problems with the handheld metering, uh, system. They will be here Thursday, along with Brad from Mitron, they're the people that make this system, and, uh, there's quite a few issues that we're going to be working on, reading the meters, reading the demands, we're doing the multipliers of the meters, we want everything done, we paid to have this done, and that's what we want. So this is being addressed Thursday, late Thursday morning, they'll be here. So I know that George, if you have any questions for them, you want to be there?
Yeah.
The old docks from the Turcot property, we took out of the water, we were going to just take them apart and destroy them or whatever. I was approached from Fulton Community College, they have a kayak in Dean down there, and they were wondering if they could have those old docks.
They certainly may.
And I didn't know, I just wanted to make sure that we're covered under liability, that we're not responsible if we give them those docks. I just wanted to make sure we're covered.
Do you want to sign a waiver or run it by the attorney? Call them or anything.
I don't know if you can, like Carol said, you can surplus. I just surplus, yeah. They would, they were a clear jump. I mean, they need a lot of work.
They need a lot of work.
They were new that, that's what we. And they don't want to bring them down, and, like, if they brought in four or five docks, they're thinking they can make maybe two good looks out of them. It's just I want to make sure that we're covered under the liability, that we're not responsible for these things. Okay.
Surplus then to be, like, or is it?
Make a motion to surplus.
I'll make a motion to surplus the old docks that are unusual, unusable from the Turcot property, put that in form of a motion. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burts, any discussion?
We have no use for any of that stuff here in the village?
Burn it, get rid of that.
Well, I mean, if someone else is going to make use of it, I'm just checking on behalf of the village whether or not we have anything that we could.
I know what that builds, at least.
Made up of our plan, it's going to have a fire. Aye, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carried. That's it, Brian? Aye, Melissa.
Thanks, George.
Save the best to last.
No, you guys probably don't listen to my reports, so I decided to make a guest appearance tonight. I asked a favor of the mayor, and I wanted to come, since it is such short notice, in case you had any questions about it. George, I, I gave you one, I don't know whether anybody else said she should look at it, and I, I emailed it over to Carol today, but I knew it was going to hit your boxes way too late for the meeting. We received, um, several different grants when the news of Wyatt's closure was announced in two thousand and five. We got money from the EDA, we got money from Empire State Development, and we got money from the Department of State. When news came, the good news about Acromax purchasing came, uh, we had to wait and see what was going to happen with that, and first Empire State Development pulled its money, then EDA pulled its money when things started to go south in the economy this summer. So what we were left with was this little bit of money left for the Department of State, and they have not pulled the money, they are, they are still going to let us have it for this community, uh, development strategy. So we ended up with about thirty-five thousand dollars to spend, and not much time to spend it because, um, the grant expires at the end of March. I called and talked to the rep and said, you know, can we get an extension, because we weren't, couldn't start the study because we didn't know about Wyatt, and then once we knew about Wyatt, we didn't know whether the other money was going to be there, now we know, all we have left is your thirty-five. And he said, Melissa, under normal circumstances, we'd give you an extension, but these aren't normal circumstances with the state. If you have your money and it's an older grant, spend it down instead of trying to get an extension. So, uh, at that point, I talked to the mayor, and we figured we needed to get someone in quickly who could do the study for us, and my first thought was the Development Corporation of Clinton County, uh, that's the organization that in general brings in the businesses they run, the town, uh, LDC and IDA now for the Town of Champagne, are the most knowledgeable people that I know of in terms of what has to happen to get more, particularly industrial and commercial development. So they put together this proposal for, with us, with AES, which is the, um, surveying and engineering firm that they usually work with, and this is to do what we're calling a community redevelopment strategy and implementation plan. Big long name for taking a look at the areas around pretty much the fringe of the village where there's some vacant land, either in the village or right outside in our franchise area. What are the conditions? What's possible? What can go in there possibly, and what has to change? What do we have to do to make that happen? You know, we've all talked about the Route Two development that was hoped, you know, more would go in there, follow power text, and, you know, Lincoln Boulevard was built, and, you know, not much happened. We'd like to take a look at what could, what could happen to, to open that development up. Uh, the land along, uh, the railroad, you know, other vacant parcels. This is the time, if you have the money, to, to take a look at it and get some recommendations. The, the way the study would run, we have a, a community meeting, let people come in and, you know, show them the areas that are vacant, look at what they're zoned at now, ask people to tell us what they think about that land and what it might be, send the consultants off to come up with a proposal, break that to you and eventually the public in terms of what should go there, what has to happen to, to make that possible. You may find areas not possible, I mean, we, we know we have some wetland issues, we have other things, but we'll have some information, and we'll have some, you know, possible actions to take that hopefully will let us work in the future toward bringing in some more development, because we all said, I know, when we got the Wyatt announcement, that we never wanted to be left in a position where all our eggs were so much in one basket, and, you know, the more we can look at what might come in, maybe support Wyatt and Acromax, other kinds of industries, who knows? I think the information is, helps you act better in the future. We have thirty-five thousand dollars, as I said, in the grant budget, they've come in at thirty. They've come in at thirty thousand. I can't imagine, you know, again, the Development Corporation, anybody better to do this for us because ultimately, hopefully, they'd be our partners in helping get it developed. So be glad to answer any questions you have. If the board could see fit to approve it tonight, it gives us a two-week head start, you know, with this real tight timeline.
What was the question that Ian asked tonight? Would the village be interested in taking on another business?
Right.
Which is a good question, because there is limited amount of space available, but if we could bring, I mean, I said I'm speaking for myself, but I think the village board, the more business comes into the village, the better for the village. So this is really along that line.
And I think the better that we know what we have to offer for whatever is available, we can better explain to someone who might be interested and maybe get them while they're hot on the idea, as opposed to having to scurry around after they've made the phone call.
That's a really good point. You hear a lot now about shovel-ready sites, and the more, we may not be able to offer a shovel-ready site, but we'll know what we have to do to get to the point where we can say to the business, hey, this is a place to look at.
And then in their marketing, countywide, they will also be aware of what we have up here. So it's not just us, it's out there as well, which I think is great. Anything we can do for the village, I think is very good.
Any other discussion, board?
I need a motion.
I'll put a motion, I'll make a motion that we allow... Let me see the thing again. I read it, but I'll make a vote, put it in form of a motion that we allow A E S Northeast, which is the Engineering and Land Surveying Northeast P L L C Limited Corporation, go ahead with the money for the thirty thousand dollars to, this, the total fee includes the deliveries, mileage and reproduction of the Community Redevelopment Strategy Implementation Plan. I'll put that in form of a motion. Yeah, you need to mention...
If you wouldn't mind, maybe, maybe the Development Corporation slash A E S, because I'm not sure who the contract will run with. It might go with the Development Corporation, and then they might subcontract with A E S, just so we're covered, if you don't mind.
How would you like to word that, Melissa, then?
Maybe if you could authorize the mayor...